Cloud.
All right, so folks, this is, we're starting this meeting late. This is a special meeting of the Danville School District Board of Directors. Monday, January 20th, our scheduled start time was seven twenty. As the, as it stated on the agenda, we were starting this meeting immediately at the conclusion of the CCSU Board of Directors meeting, which ended a couple of minutes ago. So we're starting at seven twenty. We're in the Danville School Library. Some of us are remote. We're going to introduce ourselves around the room. I'm Clayton Cargill, the board chair. Next to me here, Dave Tolby's chair. Here's on this way.
Eric Hewitt, board member.
Molly Gleason-Clark.
Mike Moriarty, Assistant Superintendent.
The room, we have one board member on Zoom, don't we, Tim?
Tim Sammore, and board member.
Thank you, Tim. That's full attendance. Director of Finance is here.
Say hi, Mike.
Jesse, yep, sorry, I'm here.
Thanks, sir. And Matt Foster, Superintendent, is in Walden, having just presided over another meeting. And he's here as well. Okay, that's everybody who's here. We have a small agenda for the night, but there was one thing that I was, that I posed to you guys to consider discussing. And that was to add discussion of an additional penny being added on and to our tax bill. And Dave, he wanted to add that on.
I mean, that's important enough for his own agenda item.
Okay, so.
Make a motion to add that to the agenda.
So we're going to add a discussion of the, specifically the decrease in long-term weighted average daily membership that led to a change in our tax rate. Did you get that, man? Say slower, I probably say slower.
They've moved to add discussion on the.
Decrease.
Decrease in LTW ATM. That adds, long-term weighted average daily membership.
Yeah, yeah.
That added a penny to our overall tax rate. And Mike's here to talk about that. And then, if possible, I'd also, motion second here, right? Could you make sense? All in favor of that addition, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion carries. With the other bit of work, this is the annual school district meeting warning for 2025. I was able to listen also to the entire packet just a few minutes ago before, so you guys could look at it. It looks like I can still amend the letter. But I also later than that sent some worksheets that Mike put together for town meeting. I'd like to probably discuss those briefly. So if I could make, have a motion to change, or to add to the district meeting warning, I would add in to discuss the worksheets as well. So I have a motion to do that. Have a second to do that. All in favor of that action, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Okay, that's going to let us discuss these things. So because the warning, which is printed here, has the changes on it, let's first discuss the, the tax implications of this long-term weighted average daily member. And I had a meeting Friday, probably right about noon, the central office called and said, come look at this. Mike, can you, Mike and Matt, can you just talk us through real quickly what it's been like in the past week with the state calling back numbers and trying to get that reconciled for each district, and specifically ours?
Matt, do you want to take this one?
Well, I can just kind of give a rough outline, but you're the one who is definitely living it and helping fight the battle between the two of us. We were trying to shake trees at the state level saying, hey, you guys said these things were locked in, and all of a sudden it's a chart, it's changing. And we finally got something today from the state saying, now we know why it's changing, and we'll try to figure out how to make it not be this problem going forward. Well, this is something that Scott, Marcia, and Mike were figuring out last week and tried to share with the state, but they weren't listening or didn't have the patience or time to think it through with us. But the impact is that with the new wording requirements for our articles for the budget, it has a huge impact on us if that long-term weighted average daily membership changes at all. You know, the budget can stay the same, but it has an impact on percent increase, decrease, and cost per student. So we had a change hit us on Monday when there shouldn't have been a change, and then we said, this is not right. You had it locked in. We started a long back and forth conversation, to put it nicely. But I'll let Mike go ahead and round out the situation with a little bit more flourish, I assume.
I think, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so mainly, how did this impact us, I guess?
Believe it or not, you didn't lose an ADM. What you lost is one of the qualifying weighting factors. When I look at what they've sent us, assuming what they've sent us is right, the Danville ADM didn't change, believe it or not. It was the weighting factor of a, of a free and reduced individual child. That factor of one is why you're seeing LTW ADM go down one for that weighting factor.
And I had the numbers wrong in the email to everybody. It was from 5.1899 to 5.1794, is that right? 51794, Mike?
Yeah, that sounds right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just double check that, but that does sound right, yes.
I think that's the number that just came across. But so it's not a kid, it's not a person, but all the kids are not all counted. The kids are counted in their bonus and their factor, other factors. And we lost, but we lost the equivalent of a long-term weighted average daily member in the, in the aggregate.
Yeah, what I was saying to Matt earlier was that the, the base number that they start with is the long-term weighted average. The, the number of free and reduced lunch, or the, it's actually 1.85 times the federal bribery line. That number can change year to year and is volatile and is not a two-year average. So it's called a long-term weighted average, but only one part of the, of the thing is, and we have a ton of kids on that are at that threshold. So we, we expect to follow through with that. But you said 517.94?
517.94 was the number that I was.
I think it's, I think it's nine six, actually. 5.17.96 is the new release as of January 16th. It should be on the handout.
It is. I just can't, I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, you're only off by two one hundreds, I think, so.
So, so the, so the rate went from 173.34 to 173.69.
Correct. 3.69. So it's not a whole cent, but it represents a whole cent and rounding. And so in the.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Actual tax rate's four decimal places.
Yeah, but if you went all four, it's 384. So 384 cents.
Well, could you have 17384?
No, no, I'm saying that's, that's the, the increase from the previous year. Eric had it right when he said it's 1.7369. He's right. I'm just saying what the increase is, is 384 from the previous year.
Okay. And so what this, this, what this means for our spending is nothing. What this means for the number that we're asking for, for the town is nothing. It only ends up being something on this percentage of the tax rate. This doesn't affect the any of the other tax rates, right? Any of the numbers on the, on the thing, just the one number at the end, just a cents. It doesn't affect. Is that what I'm looking for now?
No, it didn't affect the income sensitive rate, to your point. Yep, nor, nor did it affect the non-residential tax rate. You are correct. So that remains unchanged from the previous version, you guys saw.
Okay, so what's going to happen then? What I didn't, what I did find noteworthy, and I sent this to you guys, is that you were able to get this into the draft of, that's going to town for town report. This will be in the town report. These corrected numbers.
I believe that is. Michael, is that correct? You and Katie were working. I saw the emails going back and forth.
Katie said it. Yeah, yeah, there's a draft, there's a draft town report that her and I had to make just a couple of small tweaks, and I think that's in ready-to-go form.
I believe so as well, but we can check tomorrow.
What I can do is, I, I talked to her today, and I can go back in and change our 1.73 to 1.7369. Also, so I'm able to add numbers on that before we send that on. So it'll be in the book correctly this year. And last year, we were in the book completely incorrectly, and we had to deal with it. So this will at least be correct going forward with the town, so that we can represent to the town what we're actually asking. Well, I spoke to Dave over the weekend about it, and you know, he had some frustrations about we're trying to put budgets together, and you want to speak on that at all? Or was that just between us?
Just, just still very poor timing on the state, you know, you've got, you know, it's just, I'll remain silent when we discuss it.
It just, it just makes the work harder. What, what I spoke to you guys about late in the week.
It more worked.
This was, this was, this was happening in every single district, this in our supervisor union. And we're going in and trying to get things done to find out when we could get this warning and have this warning to be brought to everybody. And finance is buried with what they already done. And, and because of the consolidation of districts, this is the finance department for so many districts. And it's still a little bit frustrating that they had a number that they didn't pick a date to end, to set, and here we are.
And the work that our people had to do because of this is unnecessary. It shouldn't have happened, so.
It takes them away from other work.
Thank you, anybody that's worked on.
Michael and Scott really worked hard to get all this put together between fighting the state to get the people back and find out where they're at, and then having to redo the work and then redo it again. So appreciate the effort they put in.
Yeah, the entire board appreciates it.
We do. So on this one, there's no, this is just a discussion. There's no changes here except for just the wording in the letter that we wrote to the town that we talked about already, and you've seen. And there's changes that are already in the report that you've now, that you now have a copy of to work through. But there's no real changes to anything else other than the 1.7369 as opposed to the 1.73 and somewhat less. Three, four. Three, four, 1.7334. So that's where we are with that one. And I'll go in tomorrow and just, Katie's got the document in front of her. I'll change those couple of numbers, and we'll be ready for the press. And that's that. So.
Let me make sure I got this. 1.734 to 1.769.
1.7369. 1.7334.
1.7334 to 1.
1.7369.
I was gonna say, I was like, that's not right. Okay.
A lot of everything. It's a, it's a, so on a $400,000 house, it's a difference of roughly like 17, 18 bucks.
Right, yeah.
They should hear about 250 times, right? And every one of those houses will come and say anything. Okay, so are you, we all okay with that one for now? Everybody understand what happened, especially, especially can? And if they change it again, we're meeting again.
Sorry.
That's the big one. And now, the second one, Mike, contest, you can stay for this, but you don't have to, because we're just going to sign, we're going to talk about the warning, but it looks like.
Okay.
Your number's good on the warning.
I, I'm good, and I'll, I'll go if you guys don't need me.
I think we're okay, because I don't think this one's gonna.
Do you want to go over the presentation at all?
We're going to do that. So I'm going to ask you some questions about if you want to change that. Okay. Because I have to, so Mike Concesi, before you go, and then one of the next agenda items, I'm going to have the board look at that rough draft that you sent me for the presentation. And with some of those questions I asked you, I'm going to confer with them, and I might get back to you at some point with changes.
Of course. Yeah, that's, that's no problem. I can address some of the questions now if you think it's pertinent with the board there.
I, I don't think, yeah, I, I don't think yet, because I don't, I don't think that necessarily there's me asking, not the board asking yet. So I want to make sure asking on behalf of the board as opposed to me just asking, being an annoyance.
Never an annoyance, Clayton.
We want that clarity, the distinction between the two. Yes, thanks, Clayton.
That's fine.
Okay. So we're going to move on to the warning. And we have, we have a copy of the warning here that's in front of me, and I took back to the select board that we want to meet first. So our official meeting time is 10. I took back to the select board that we would not be asking those questions about changing the charter. And so those questions are on this morning. I took Dave's, Dave and I had a discussion about the order of how we, how we start, which director gets picked first. And he thought it made more sense, and as classically been that the three-year director is picked first. So we have Article One is going to be to elect a school moderator. Article Two, Matt's got a copy of this, so I'll link in. Article Two is going to be to elect a school term director for a term of three years. And we have Eric's going to run for the three-year seat. And then we have to elect two school directors for a term of one year each. I'm also up, I was in a three-year seat. I would ask the town to let me come back in for a one-year seat. And then we have one more one-year seat that Molly is sitting in, and Molly, you intend not to run. Is that correct officially? Officially, in the school board meeting, you're going to say?
Officially, yes.
Officially in the school board. And so because of that, we made, through the administration of the school, an announcement that there was going to be a board seat that we, that we presumed to be available, and that we would be looking for some public help in filling the seat and doing the work for us. So we are in fact looking for somebody, if you're watching the video and you're interested in school board work, please feel free to contact one of us or all of us, or a school administrator and others. And so Article Four of this is the spending. Article Four of this, and it says, shall the voters of the Danville School District approve the Australian ballot? The school board to expend eight, the numbers, 8,605,467, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year FY26. The Danville School estimates that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in pure per pupil education, education spending of 1,5054, which is 4.7% higher per pupil spending than for the current year. That last bit was not in last year's warning, or any of the prior couple of years' warnings that had been removed. And it's now back based on the yield bill that came out last year. So that's going to show that we have an increase in per pupil spending, and that's that one.
Is, is the law that the wording has to be per pupil?
Yes.
Okay, because yeah, these are.
They're not for equalized people. It's for pupil.
So it's not even for, yeah, it's for.
It's for imaginary people.
It's for, it's for.
Long-term weighted average.
It's for denominator numbers.
Yeah. Great. And so this, so there's that one. So that, that's what we have with that one. We are well below the excess spending threshold. That's not, that's not a factor for us. And if anybody asks, well, will they expect excess spending threshold? And our spending is margin keeping. Now, in this particular case, we talked about this, we made this motion in the last meeting. Article Five says, shall the voters of Danville School District authorize the school board to deposit surplus funds in the amount of $166,000 into the district's capital reserve fund? And this is an Australian vote, Australian ballot, only question that we discussed, and that'll be Article Five. Article Six is always on there. Shall the voters of the Danville School District authorize its board of directors to borrow money to pay its lawful debts and expenses for the fiscal year that ends June 30th, 2026, in an amount not to exceed 90% of the anticipated collection of taxes and receipts of other funds to be used for those purposes? That's an annual question, because taxes are collected on October, and we owe money to the town back and forth several times before then. And this is, this is where the borrowed money thing goes into the account that Mike always tells us about, and hopefully we net zero on that. Article Seven, shall the voters of the Danville School District authorize the board of directors to hold any audited fund ballots as of June 30, 2025, and a reserve fund to be expended under the control and direction of the board of directors for the purpose of operating the school? That means, can you access funds though, unrestricted? And then from there. And then Article Eight would be to transact any other non-bidening business that may legally come before this week. Which is a question in Australian ballot that allows us to talk to people. It asks for a date, it asks for our names, and then we give it to the treasurer, and it goes into the book. And there's a blank in the pages that we have. Are there any questions on this?
Can you read the number that we're asking for?
Eight, six, zero, five, four, six, seven. And it's not written out. So it's just this, it's just this one thing.
Okay. And two years ago, Mr. Tucker, he, if, he.
I heard, yeah.
You know, and he really, he really fell on the sword and said, hey, it's my bad. But five, five people signed it, and five of us that signed it.
Only four. Tim didn't sign it.
The five, Tim didn't sign?
Well done, Tim.
Tim signed the first, so in that year, Tim signed the first copy, but not the second copy, because we did that one twice.
Yeah.
And the first one was correct.
Tim dodged it.
Bravo, Tim. But, but we as board members, whoever signed this, have, have to have accountability to make sure those numbers are right.
Yeah, it was pretty embarrassing, and we should not do that again. And so, Matt, can we date this today, or should we date this, this should be dated today, correct?
Yeah, if you're all signing, I think you signed it today, dated today. There's one spot, though, that's for the town clerk to date, you know, being submitted. So just read carefully through there.
I'm going to, we're going to have four sign here, and then I'm coming, Tim, I'm coming to your house. Is that fine?
Yeah, that's fine.
You're gonna like it. You're feeding me dinner also, but I'm coming to your house to have this signed this evening, if that's okay. Unless you want to come up here real fast. Are you home? Cold.
I'm home. You can come here.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so. I think I need a motion, need a motion to approve this warning, and then signature.
May you approve the warning?
For the Danville School District.
For the Danville School District? As presented? Or as read?
So this is the easy thing, he's asking for a motion to approve the annual school district meeting warning. I have a second, I have a second for the same action. I have a motion to approve for the annual school district meeting warning. I have a second to approve the annual school district meeting warning. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the annual school district meeting warning, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll sign this one.
I have a quick question for the presentation, the school budget presentation that's, that we sent around, I think you sent it around?
The draft, yeah.
Am I putting that in the, linking that in the minutes?
Not yet. It's a working, it's what we say, you can.
Well, the only thing with that, I have to put it as an open, it's not PDF. So essentially, if somebody went in there and I put it as anybody with a link can access it.
You can download it as a PDF.
You can download it as a PDF.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, that's what I was wondering about. Is, are there any more changes to this?
There's going to be lots.
Okay, so I'm not going to link it now, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's going to be, yeah, there's going to be, there's going to be more than a couple.
All right.
On that one.
Yeah, and it's not in the official meeting document packet. We broke over that.
No, no, it wasn't, it's just going to be at the, so there's something, there's some questions that I have about some things that we might want to talk about.
Yeah.
In that presentation, because, but it's not, it's for the information.
All right, I just want it set then.
So I'm going to sign this. And today is 20.
Can you handle that?
First and finish me, so. All right, so this is part of the same bit of discussion, once we get that done, discussing that worksheet. One of the things that came up last year from a man said that there was a lot of things that were listed as other in the town report, and too many of them, and they, they totaled a very large number, and probably they should be split out. There's a lot less of those. And so we just want to go over that and take a look at those. And then one of the things that Molly asked me for, and I wanted to know if you guys wanted that to be part of the presentation, was on a single sheet on the presentation that we give to the town, is a specific list of the jobs that we're removing from CCSU and the jobs that we're removing from the Danville special location. So that when we put that sheet up, we say, these are the jobs that are being eliminated to save you money, all on one sheet of paper, as opposed to trying to look at them in two separate places. I have that document.
And I noticed that when I was doing the minutes, and it didn't line up. So if someone is ever looking to see if it matches up with a town report and whatnot, what we're saying, just making sure it's clear where they don't have to go and, you know, go through the packet and try to.
So I, I don't, I don't know if we can get that one into the, do you want to try to get that one into the town report, or do you want to try to, because I was going to see if we just got to get that into the presentation.
Into the presentation, yeah.
So for the people that come and ask the questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I can get it, I can.
People go through those town reports. I mean, I got, on town meeting day, I got tons of questions just from people just going through it right then and there.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. If it's more clear, we can make that.
Okay, I, well, there may be room for it. Let me look, let me just look at the thing. But I think that's something that we can talk about having, because Katie sent it to us for review.
Yeah.
And that probably will be something that we can add in, taking, just, let me see how much space we have.
What does everyone?
Can you share if you have it?
Oh, yeah, just, just a little document?
Yeah.
Let me.
The draft of the.
The draft of the whole thing?
Well, whatever the draft of the town report, the world.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, let me do, let me see if I can share. I'm going to find it first.
And I'm going to cause a whole thing.
Because I don't know how to work the computer. Thing is not a work is computer, sorry. Not the Danville.
Yeah, but having those, those positions that are.
Later on, this is a bit. So cancel, and I'm the share screen. That is not, and I'm the. Share, okay. So this is what the R half of the town report is going to look like. And we have this one here, FY24. And then we have a table of contents. The auditor's report, but yeah, I can probably make that very much bigger.
Yeah, you're okay.
Okay, the minutes from last year. The vote results from last year from the various articles. This is where the warning will go. This is what I wrote that we got edited, and again, I'm going to change that 1.73 to a more specific number of 1.73, and nothing else changes. And the number's the same. The principal's report. Superintendent's report. Report from HR, report from boot services, report from IT, stop me anytime, pictures of children. So in here, faculty and staff, Danville local. And in here, you can also see I think John Corvus is on here for the point eight. This is, this is the point eight right there. It's being changed. The other one is in the CCSU billing, to move to the Danville locals, so that's the point eight we're moving up. This is the funding. And this is part of the packet as well as part of, a part of this. So we want to go over this one, and we want to make sure, see, I need them to change this number, I'm pretty sure, from 128K to 115.
Uh, this, I think, was the demographics from last year, right?
No, this is this year's demographics.
Okay, so 161 then?
I don't know. I, so I probably needed to look at those numbers again. Let me highlight that for myself. So I think that in the packet, this 151, between 115 and 128, there's a second set of breakdown, when I get to the breakdown screen, I'm going to see if he has it laid out, where there's a breakdown.
Also, also, this, this number is wrong. So the 174 is rounded, that should be 173, and then if you're going to round again, we want 737.
Point one, okay, so we want to, we want to change that from 1.6.
Well.
He rounded up to 174.
Yeah, and then he went out to three decimal places.
16. Okay, so he rounded, he rounded up, and he rounded, and then he zeroed it out.
And then he put a zero on the end, but it's actually, yeah. 1737.
1.737, okay, okay. And so I, what he told us on this one, and I'll have to get with him pretty quick tomorrow, was that the number is greater than 90K but less than 115K.
Yes.
And then greater than 115K pays the full number.
Right.
And then when you come down here later, it describes that. So that's an edit that needs to be made. What, so that's page one, that's on page 16. And we need to make sure the numbers are good.
Right.
Or numbers good. Okay. And then the rest of it's the dollars and cents there. And this says 174, but we want that to say 1737.
Uh, it's how many, how many decimal places you want. I mean, if it's two decimal places, that's fine.
Okay, I think we can, I mean.
The actual tax rate on your bill is four.
Yeah, so I, I think, I, I think that 174 is the truth. 1.7, you know, as much as 1737 is the truth.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the actual number is, is that four, is, like I said, that's the number that they.
Right.
Is actually calculated on you, because you, you have, your house will have an appraisal of like, and then it's divided by 100, right?
Right.
Because of the dollars per hundred dollars of house value.
And the real number is 1.7367?
69.
1.7369. 69, okay, so. Six nine, okay, so. We've classically called that one seventy four in just in in the parlance, but.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, if you're if you're just showing two decimal places, that's fine to show it there. Are other CCSU salaries gonna be there?
They're coming.
In here, okay.
They're coming. So that's that one, the one seventy four, one seventy three seven, one point seven three six nine. Pictures of kids. Now, here's here they. Here's the CLA stuff and how the CLA gets normalized. Any questions here? And this on this side, you have the tax changes, what gets pushed. It shows the spending. These are tax rate calculations, and this is. This goes backwards to the other ones that were proposing this budget. He's got one seventy four again.
Yeah.
And I think people will be pleased that the non-resident rate is higher than the local rate. They generally don't. That's a. That's a point of contention always. And as you look down the revenue lines, very important for us, you know, the 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 potential tuition kids and the potential for everything else to show. Here's the Daniels. So the Danville School, the CCSU budget, here's the Danville School budget, and there's others listed here. And do you want these others splayed out a little further?
Yeah, could we could we specify those others?
Yeah, if it's like seventeen thousand.
And that's like thirty five grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So this is.
Thirty five grand, I would definitely break that one out.
So can it be a parenthetical?
Sure.
So like if it says other, and then it's a parenthetical, and it says two other, two things or three?
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just like what does other mean for regular ed? Is that pencils? Is it testing? You know.
I agree. That's a great question. I think it's it's good for us to have other, a good asterix there or something like that. Yep.
So we wanna. We wanna disambiguate these numbers when they're big. Um, so I'll come to you, Mike tomorrow. Matt tomorrow with this, and we'll talk to Mike.
Yeah, I'll look those answers myself. Just I know I'll be getting those questions. What are? We we always get the what's the other?
It's it's a. It's a very valid question, and here's a seventeen thousand.
Other services, it's like.
And the fact that it's when you do add it up, and it's in every single category, that ends up being quite a bit.
When we saw the breakdown.
For the objects, the other will be the same. That's okay. It's when you have it other places, but if we get it one time for that eight hundred, you know, what's the other? It'll be the same thing with in in every function.
It should. Yeah, it should. This should be roughly the same thing every time.
Yep.
Should be a three or four of the small investments to save space.
Right, yeah.
So we just wanna. We wanna. We wanna make sure that that is known what it is. So like student support, there's no other.
Yeah.
And then under supplies, there's no others. Under library, there is a thousand dollars of other. And who knows if that's books.
Well, we also have ten thousand dollars of other services. So it's like, what what is the difference between professional property and other services there?
My my, yeah, I think for other services and professional services is more of my my thing because for a library, it could be um subscriptions, or it could be, is it the IT software they need to keep track of all their books? So we we got a couple of things there, I think.
And this this is just gonna be adding words to the spreadsheet and then and then making it a new PDF. I think it should be good. Professional services, we understand. Here's three thousand dollars in other. This is probably stipends for something. This is probably specifically stipends for um.
We looked at all this when we first looked at the budget, cause we had this concern, and he had it broken out by like five.
Yeah, it's all there. This is all just a little bit of busy work. We just here's twenty two thousand dollars, and it just doesn't seem like a good number to be hidden.
Yeah.
Yep.
So this is. So Matt, this is the thing we wanna attack, and we wanna attack it because the man brought us this question last year, and it's a good question.
I think it's a great thing to attack, cause I need to have all that information in my head anyway, so let's get it.
Okay. And then moving down, this is. This was gonna be in both sides. This is in the presentation, and this is in the book as well. So this is a page that we'll be referencing in the book. Um, you know, the pre-K tuition for kids we can't handle, the SU assessments.
How many kids we can handle?
All most are most three years olds.
If you go up real quick.
Yeah.
I do have a question about this. Um, I don't know if we have to go into like executive session on that or not, because I know that we come to a a tentative agreement on the support staff, and my question is is that? Is that right? Or are are we um, you know, have we have we budgeted high low, what what have you?
I. So this is for the. This is for the coming year. In the second year, um, we should be fine without going into executive session, without going into too much detail.
Okay.
Um, we should be fine.
Okay.
So we 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 were um, we were open with the uh, support with the support staff negotiators about what we could offer. And they met us in some spots, and so we are. We are fine. Okay, I think. I think if we go. If you'd like to, we we can go into an executive session, and I can give you some of the details.
We can wait until it gets finalized and go through the full session, but.
Okay.
I just wanted to flag that and say.
Yeah, so.
Hey, is is this gonna be a problem?
Right, in 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 the in the current in the current year we're in, um, we were lucky to have some unspent funds in this year. This coming year, we're okay.
And the benefit line includes the two um, people who've moved up to receive benefits.
Those people as well, right, to to including those and just everybody across the board.
Yeah.
That that's but mostly the twelve percent increase across the board, but it includes the two. And the pre-K tuition. And these are the positions that we're open that we weren't filling, and this is. This is one of the things right here that this this particular one that's gonna get cut out and put. So it's already here. And then um. Oh, he put. He did. He put it right here. This is what he put. So I. This is what I asked him to put, Molly. And what what we talked about, and he's already in here.
Okay.
So he has placed into this report the two separate ways that we're cutting staff in on one page to show.
That's helpful. I think it's good to show that.
It's. So this is where you get the point. This is where you show them in the book. Th- these are the people. So it's already here. So he took. He took your advice and our advice and did this for us already. So this one's a fixed, a solved problem.
Yeah.
And I think it's a good process to go going use going forward with others.
Are you okay with that, Molly?
Yeah, technically, I wrote in the minutes, is it seven point seven that we we had thought initially?
It's supposed to be seven point one, cause it's a plus a point six. So.
Right, you have.
It's a point six back the other way, and it it ends up being.
That's right.
And there's a point one somewhere else.
Yeah.
And there's point four for Brandon. It comes back in as point two four, because it's something else, but that's not really described here.
Oh, cause he's going to the SU.
He's going to the SU level, and then we pay that based on the fifty percent average daily membership and the fifty percent. I'm gonna show you that here in a minute, but we end up for right now, saving sixteen percent of his salary for this year on that.
What do you? What do you say in the letter about what we cut total or not? Not that filling in the letter. Are you saying seven in there? Seven FTE?
I I think I I just I described the jobs themselves. Yeah, seven and.
Did you give a number in that?
I think I said seven.
Okay.
Wait, stop here. I can go back to. What page are we on? Let's see. We are on page twenty seven. Let me go back up to it, cause it's here. There's no point in looking for it. Since it's here. Not there. Seven. I I got seven written out right here, what amounts to seven positions.
Yeah, that's.
So I I don't have it oversold, I don't think. I have it slightly undersold.
Yeah.
And I'm not calling it. I'm not calling it people, cause it's positions, cause I don't wanna call it people.
Good thought.
Yep. And so this is. This is what we wanted from Mike, and here it is. And then moving down, you see some of the general assessment stuff, and he and so this is um, this this particular spot right here. This is the other one moving from one point oh from point six. This is our clinician that we talked about. And so this is the extra cost for education services for mental health. That's an increase in at the SU level for Danville. And that's why you see that larger number there. And that is factored in before the wages and healthcare at the SU level, the CBA, et cetera. Past that, you get all of the CCSU um, jobs and titles, and this can't be pulled out district by district without somebody doing a day and a half worth of work. So this is the entire SU. And so some of these aren't germane to Danville particularly, but the whole list is germane so that you can see that.
It's completely transparent.
It's right. So everybody knows that everybody makes everywhere in the SU. And then and so a lot of it, and this is alphabetical by person as opposed to being alphabetical by school, and then in a lot.
It does list the school.
It does list the school, and in a lot of cases, like this one here, not this one, right above it. Um, it says. It says where they're deployed, and so this person works in Danville School as a CCSU employee, but this person right above her works for the CCSU, but only at the CCSU level. And so it's it's i- i- it's made specific there in that first line, where they're deployed, who they are, and what they do, and how much they make.
I know transportation was a question that came up last year where it was confusing, because every school handles it differently, like why? Um, Denise, she's CCSU or what's her title?
She's the CCSU Transportation Director.
Yeah, there was confusion about. I got a question about transportation last year about.
Because we have, because um, we have some of the other districts use Butler buses.
Right.
And so she would then liaise for the Butler buses where 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 there's that case, and then she would schedule the drivers and also drive.
Yeah.
But she is. I I don't think she's. I don't. I don't actually know. Think she's paid by all the districts. I think she's only paid by three districts.
I think you're correct. It's only three. I think it's Twinfield, Cabot, and Danville.
Share her.
Should you share her expense like we do with athletic director? So it's.
I feel like that directors different if he's still contributing to the other.
And our drivers, our drivers.
Not yet. We have a different plan for that one.
Flash will be in there.
Say it again.
Okay, there's one. Yeah, okay. Alright.
What was the question?
I was just confirming that, yes, our bus drivers would all be listed.
So our bus drivers are listed, and they're even disambiguated between their other jobs when they have other jobs.
I think when it was where where the confusion was, is when there's a combined bus driver and custodian for another school, and people who are looking through and confused about why.
Sure.
Although it's in Twinfield.
So those are still. There there will still be somewhere on here, bus driver, custodian, cause there's at least one that still works in Twinfield.
Yeah.
And that job description now exists across the supervisory union. So if we found someone who wanted to work in in Danville, that wanted to drive a bus and be a custodian in the daytime, we can hire them to do that. Um, as opposed to what we do now, which is we can hire them for on a separate contract to do something else. We can hire them under one contract. But that job description now exists for you can be a bus driver. You can be a bus driver who works as a para educator in the daytime, or you can be a bus driver custodian, and that can be your job for one rate. So there there are several different ways that we can hire bus drivers, and what that the idea is that that'll help us hire both bus drivers and custodians to give them multiple opportunities.
Yeah.
And then we have custodians and head custodians, obviously. And um, so some of these jobs are they're sent out just to the schools or deployed just to the schools, and they're paid by the schools, and then some of them are paid by the the fifty fifty formula that we now agree to, the fifty percent um, staff FTE number and the fifty percent long-term weighted average of the membership number. And that's all of these people. And and then again, just to just to be clear, this is the one that's moving over. This one says in this past year. What um, what this? They have it listed as teacher regular, but she's a clinician.
Right. I don't know why it says teacher, but I agree it's clinician. Yeah.
So I think that maybe we wanna go back in and change that to call her a clinician.
Yeah, that'd be confusing. And I'm sorry, that's as such.
So let's go look at that one, and we'll say clinician there, cause that's her. It's her actual title. And what you see there is you see that she's working one point oh but not taking the insurance, and then the number jumps. But she's working. I don't. I don't think that number's right either, but she she. Oh, you know what? That number's right because of a.
It's your portion.
Uh, for it. That's not an entire year salary, which I'll talk to you about some other time. But it's it's a specific thing. Well, I should. She had a baby. Let's. She had a baby. I can say that, right? She had a baby. She was out half the year. She had a baby. She was on maternity leave for some unknown reason. I can say that. Alright, so anyway.
On maternity. I like that. On maternity leave for some unknown reason. Yeah.
So that's the book. So I think that we need to change her that particular job title to to clinician.
Can you go up?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention where you're from too. Hey, metal notes to the back. Uh, six hundred thousand dollars of unreserved or unrestricted funds.
I well, I wanna talk to you about that in a minute, and I wanna see if you wanna add something to the presentation, or if you wanna add something to the book. But yeah, so we we have six hundred thousand dollars of as of. So when you go back up here, as of six thirty twenty four, when we were finally audited, what we had was six hundred and fifty six thousand one eighty six of unrestricted funds.
This is an audit number.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so unaudited, I mean. So at the end of last year, the number that they think we're gonna have is six fifty six, cause they don't audit this year until next year. So that's the unaudited number that we have. And so one thing that I wanted to ask you specifically was, do you wanna help us make a chart for the worksheet?
Sure.
So that we can understand, make the town understand what is and isn't encumbered of that six fifty six, because also it'll help us answer the question of why we're moving to the one sixty six.
Right.
And so you had a number in your head that was better than the number that I have in my head, a little bit more specific about where we have agreed to spend money.
Mm hmm.
And then what is left of that six fifty six minus the two hundred and twenty that we just said we need to spend on?
Yeah, there's also.
The heating systems and thirty seven on something else and fourteen thousand on locks. But we need to show all that before we say there's six hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. We wanna move one sixty six, and that only leaves one forty.
Doesn't. Wouldn't Mike have that documented?
He has. He has it all encumbered, but he doesn't have it documented until it's spent.
Oh.
So he has the authorizations to spend it.
Yeah.
But he doesn't have it. Um, he might. He has it logged, and he's allowed to spend it, but he doesn't have it logged as. Well, he has it only logged as encumbered.
Encumbered.
A new line here that's like um, encumbered, unaudited, ending one twenty twenty five?
Maybe, but I don't know how fast. I don't know if he can get that in there by Thursday.
Okay.
So I don't know. I think that what we that what might benefit us better is a worksheet that says that to the town.
I wonder if there are any sort of like statutes around language with that, you know, you have to say certain certain language that needs to be included around line items and in terms of what's presented. I I don't know. I think there may not be anything around that.
So they have authorized us in the article last year and in previous articles that we can spend the money, that the board can spend the money on restricted funds.
Or meaning more language if we have to put, yeah, I guess, in terms of.
Here?
Yeah, so if there's anything if we have to put that it's, I don't know, going to the building and using certain language here.
I don't think.
To show.
I don't think there we do, cause there he's just using a template.
It's his own, whatever he wants to put in. Okay, alright.
Yeah, so the number, the number that we actually have in there right now is four oh six eight two five.
Four oh six, right, and then we're asking them to move one sixty six over.
Yes.
But we wanna sort of lay that out in a spreadsheet and add that to the um, the thing that we're the uh, information that we're presenting to the town in informational meetings. I don't know if you would have that by tomorrow, that we put it in in a in a book, but maybe I can get a page in the book if you have it by tomorrow.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I mean, that's the. I think that we that we want to show everybody what we're trying to do.
Right.
Rather than rather than tell them what we wanna do, we wanna show, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yep.
That's the one thing. Because there's six fifty six unencumbered, they say, why are you? How does that become two forty?
Couldn't we just add a line that says minus encumbered funds for building costs?
I think if we have it.
And just one lumped, or do you wanna? You wanna outline every single thing that?
I think, because it's actions that we took.
Yeah.
What? When I saw this, and I said, what can we do here to make it clearer?
Yeah.
What I immediately what I thought of was this piece of paper that he brings in his hand.
Yeah.
And once the numbers are in his head, that I think he knows what we have encumbered, Eric. That would make it really easy to put a little chart in there to reference, because I think that the more specific that it is, that if we say that we have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for heating controls, then it makes more sense than saying that we have three hundred thousand dollars total encumbered.
Yeah.
So I just I just worry about not being specific. You know, encumbered with nothing to describe it is the same as other.
Right.
You know, and that was my concern is that we weren't being specific enough. So that's what I was thinking is if we had that to put either in the worksheets or even. I didn't think we'd have a chance to get it in the book, because when I asked, when I originally had this question, the book was already at the printers, and I wasn't gonna be able to change anything. So hopefully we can change that. And that's it. That's in the book. And that was the one. That was the number one question that I had for the presentation was those two things was, did you wanna add in the thing that Mike already added in for us here, and did you wanna break out the um, six fifty six into the more real numbers that that now exist based on what we've already agreed to spend to improve the building and or school security? Agreed to spend to improve the building and/or school security, and if you do, then that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, and if we can do that, I can get back in with them.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, definitely, because like, especially the, the number of positions that are going away is. I mean, really important to put in there, like, this is.
Yeah, but it was, it was already in there, but we wanted to make it really, really easy to see.
Yeah.
But really, really easy to point to, and really, really easy if somebody sends you an email, then you say, turn to page 37 of the book. And you say, please look in your town report, and they say, I don't have a town report, I don't want a town report, and so, but, go get a town report. But if you can point them to one page, that was really, really important, so I talked to them about that pretty much right off the bat when Molly brought it up. How do you, how are you showing this, and how can I show it to people in the last set of minutes, that that was going to be valuable information? And then the 656, it just came up, because it just seems to make a lot of sense, once we're asking them to touch that money themselves, and let us move it. That we need to tell them what we've done with it, what we have, and show our responsibility.
Oh, that's, I mean, big number, big numbers.
The 220 is a big number.
Yeah.
And so that's where I am. Is that where we are? The warning is good, I, we'll go in and see if we can change these things, Matt, you're going to take it back to something about the other, and I'll come talk to you tomorrow?
Yep, sounds good. I've got a meeting in the morning, are you able to work, can we do something in the afternoon?
Yeah, whatever, just let me know.
Sounds good, thanks.
Okay, so that, I'm going to change the one thing in, in the other part, and then this, this will, we have a better, uh, this is different than in previous years. Where this book is printed before we get a chance to look at it, so. It's a little bit, a little bit better, we get told, we'll present it, so this is a little bit easier for us to deal with, now that we're having a little bit better ownership over the pages. Whether it goes in smoother, I don't know, but we're having a little bit better ownership over the pages. All right. Ready to be done with that? Okay. I'm going to move on, public input.
Move on.
Thank you.
No. No.
All right, um, after this. Next meeting day, we have our regular meeting on the first Monday, the first Tuesday of February. Okay, and that date is, I think it's the fifth. No, it's the fourth. So the fourth of, February 3rd, there's a CCSU Strategy Design Meeting also, for those of you interested. You had mentioned an interest across the street, down on Danville, February 4th is this, the informational meetings, I sent you guys some information about the informational meetings from Audrey. Um, the select board wanted to try to encourage membership at the first one of those meetings by putting it on the Saturday and having food. And, um, I, I want them to succeed, I'm working Saturday at noon, but I can be there at 12:20, and I'm going to stink. And, um, so if you guys could be there that Saturday.
February 8th.
Yeah.
It's a tournament.
Okay, I mean, this is, this is, there's, there's not a single day that they can schedule any of these meetings between February 8th and Town Meeting Day. That there's not people out of town or people doing something else, so if you're available, you're available, and if you're not, it's generally for a good reason, and everybody respects that. We're not conducting any business at these meetings, we don't need a forum of members at these meetings, we're the guests of the select, we're at these meetings, even though they don't recognize that, we just go and present to the town. Um, what we have, and anybody that will listen, we point them to pages in the book, so if you can be there on the 8th, you can be there on the 8th, I'll get there as soon as I can. And I'll work with, and Matt should be there, and he will be probably one of the very first ones where Matt's presenting. And so, or we're, we're presenting with Matt, and so he'll go over to meet some of the people in the town he hasn't met. He was at the one last year. Only you were at both, right, Matt?
Only the fir-, well, I don't know if it was the first one, but I was at one of them, yes.
You were the fir-, you were the first one, and then the second one, the North Danville one, uh, there's, the, we never can have a superintendent there, because everybody else has their meeting night before. And we've already had one, so the North Danville one will probably just be a rumor. Whoever shows up and. From us and more. And the select word, and it's cookies, that one has cookies.
I'll just.
You should bring your graph, what's the date for the North Danville one?
Night before. It's always night before, so it's, it's easy to schedule, so that one's close to a month away, that was on May, Feb., May, March the 3rd.
Yeah, I'm just surprised they're putting, the select boards doing the first one so early, I mean.
They, they changed last year how soon you could do them. And, um, they're trying to push it back before the school vacation, so that more people will have the vacation excuse. And so that they can get their message out sooner about what the costs are going to be, so the budget floats, the budgets float in the air. So that people know them, so because the, with the publication of the book, and then the budget sits there, and nobody knows that what questions to ask for as an opportunity. And then maybe they can start asking, and then there's just like, we're meeting in between, where people can come, and that's the idea.
A noble cause.
It's, it would, it shows the food, somebody's got to make food for a, a number of people, a number of people who may or may not show up, and you have to guess. And you're going to end up with, you know, a lot of taco meat leftover, or you're going to have people that are clamoring for tacos, because they got there at 12 or 6, so there's really no winning on that. So those are the next two meetings, if you can't be there on the 8th, I understand if you can't be there on the 8th. I'm going to smell like compost, and, um, there's nothing I can do about it. And, uh, after that's our next meeting day, and it's 8:15, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sold.
Have a motion to adjourn, can I get a second?
So, yeah.
I have a second to adjourn, all of you are of adjourning at 8:16, please say aye.
Oh, yeah.
All right, stop that reporting.